Anyway, this evening's Planning and Zoning Commission. People need to understand that the Planning and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. The city council will hold a public hearing and make final decisions on all matters before the commission, other than site plans. The commission's decision to approve or deny a site plan is the final decision by the city unless the applicant appeals to city council. So you'll need to contact the city clerk, or community development department staff, for details on those council hearings. This evening, the applicant will be given 10 minutes to present their request after staff's presentation. Proponents and then opponents are allowed to speak with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant will then be allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will be closed, and after motion, the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the issue under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. The items listed on the consent portion of the agenda, and there are two of those tonight, will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or member of the commission requests the item be removed from the consent agenda and separately considered under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities, and encourages participation in city government. To better serve you, when possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance at area code 515-2834209, should special accommodations be required. Assistive listening devices are also available in the meetings in the council chambers. The Planning and Zoning Commission meetings are also broadcast on MediaCom Cable Channel 7, but you won't be here, I'm sorry. For customers with that service, the broadcast is also streamed live in real time on the City of Des Moines website at www.dmgov.org. You need to click the "Watch Live" link for those meetings. Kathy, do we have a quorum? Quorum being present? Pretty close, wasn't it? Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Is there a motion? Joanne moved it? Will?
An addition, please.
Alright.
On the railroad closing, I recommended an independent consultant prepare a comprehensive plan to address this matter and added capacity.
Okay. Do you have a written? Can you write that up? Make sure Kathy's got it right? Okay. Thank you. Any other changes, additions, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Carries. There are two items on the consent portion of the agenda, and you'll see if we move it up a little bit. Eric, can we? The first item is a request from Bruce and Kristy Kennedy, 2824 Southwest 9th Street, for a vacation of a 35-foot seg... I just had supper, so... 35-foot segment of 12-foot wide north-south dead-end alley adjoining to the west of the subject property in the block, bounded by Creston Avenue, Virginia Avenue, Southwest 9th Street, and Southwest 12th Street. So anyone here in opposition to that item tonight? In opposition to that item? Anyone of the commissioners want to remove it? Seeing none? Item two is a request from Strollo Development LLC, represented by Don Strollo, for review and approval of a site plan amendment under the design guidelines for vehicle display on property located at 2401 and 2419 Southwest 14th Street, to allow expansion of the existing recreational vehicle sales lot, additional subject properties owned by Randall Boyd. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to that item tonight? In opposition? Seeing none? Any commissioner wants to remove that? Are there any additions that we should add to the consent agenda? Anybody sees? Joanne?
I'd like to see number eight added to the consent agenda.
Okay. And eight is a request from Christ the King Housing Services LLP, represented by Monsignor Frank Bonanno, for review and approval of a site plan under design guidelines for multiple family dwellings on a property located at 2602 Southwest 9th Street, to allow for development of a four-story senior living apartment building with 25 residential units. Does everybody understand what that one is? Is there any opposition to that item being taken on to consent? Okay. Is there a motion? Have you got a motion already?
Yep.
Any discussion on moving it to consent? Item number, because it's eight? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Is there anyone here who doesn't know what item you're on, and you may be confused about what we're doing with the consent portion? Please raise your hand. Okay. Is there a motion to move the consent? Greg? All those in favor of the three items on consent, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, I'm sorry Kathy, I'm catching up. Okay. Those three items have passed. Moving on to item number four, there is a request to continue that item to February 7th, our first meeting in February. Is there another one? Just that one?
In six.
Okay, alright. And item number six, look at item number six, there's also a request to continue that indefinitely, which would mean it would need to be re-noticed.
And they would be coming back with a different zoning district.
Did I cut you out of this one, Eric? I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to clarify on that, sir.
I appreciate it, Greg.
So that people understand that we would re-notice it for a different zoning category.
Alright. Is there anyone here to speak on either of those items? Let me run over these quickly. Item four is a request from Hubble Realty, represented by Steve Nieber, as I'm so well-coached by my compatriot here, for review and approval of a site plan under design guidelines for multiple family dwellings, to allow for development of six four-unit rowhouse dwellings at 325 Southwest 7th Street, and two five-unit rowhouse dwellings at 314 Southwest 6th Street, for a total of 34 two-story rowhouse dwellings. Everybody understand which one that is? Is there any questions? And the request for that is to be continued until the 7th of February. Is there a motion on that?
So moved.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and take both these up together, that's probably easier. The next one is a request from Brace LLC, represented by Alex Landerstrat, to rezone property located at 901 Bell Avenue. Is there anyone here to speak on that item tonight? In opposition to that item? Seeing none? Do we have a motion? Alright, Mike? Does anybody have any question about what we're doing on these continuances? I just want to make sure everybody's clear. So we would move both continuances, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Passes. Now we're going to item number three, is a request from James Sarkone, to rezone property located at 4506 Southwest 9th Street. The subject property is owned by David Holmes. Eric, are you presenting on that item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Some of you may recall this property previously from coming through the rezoning process. The subject property located at the northwest corner of Southwest 9th Street and Emma Avenue, originally built as a filling station, and then most recently was rezoned with the restrictions that are listed in the staff report, A through E, which prohibited it from allowing vehicle display as a use. And so that is the focus of the applicant's request, is to remove that condition, which would then allow the use of the property for a vehicle display lot. It would still require a site plan approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission as well, before it would be allowed to be used for that purpose. So this is the first step, is just to remove that through the rezoning process. The subject property is currently vacant, had been occupied by a contracting business, which also, I think, dealt with, they did gutters and parking lot maintenance and that type of thing. And they had some history with zoning violations, but they did, at one point, bring it up to conformance with site plan requirements based on their zoning conditions, when they rezoned it a couple of years back.
That one did come before us, wasn't it, Eric?
Yes.
Okay.
The site plan didn't come before you, but you limited it to certain things, right? The applicant is now asking to, and has provided us with a concept for display, again, this is just a concept at the rezoning stage here, but they would have to come back with an actual site plan to get approval for the site configuration. There we go.
Eric, what is the minimum site size for auto display, and how large is this property?
The design guidelines for vehicle display lots in the site plan ordinance would require a half acre, and this is just a hair under that. If you look at the site size in this item two of the general information, it's 20,556 square feet, or 0.47 acres. So that's one of the deficiencies it would have going into those design guidelines. This is the layout there. We've confirmed that most of this plant material is in place, based on the approved site plan. It would certainly require additional plant material as part of vehicle display lot design guidelines, but for the time being, it does seem to have what it needs for the site plan that's currently approved. Staff's general review of this was looking at the design guidelines for vehicle display, and looking at proximity to other uses in the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant has pointed out that to the north, there is a longstanding vehicle display lot. It is considered legal nonconforming, and it's been in continuous use, and that is why it is in existence there at this point in time. Previous to this being rezoned in recent years, this actually was a C1-zoned property. So when you look at the Southwest 9th corridor in this area, it is predominantly C1 neighborhood retail zoning, and the character of it is the neighborhood retail-type uses. And so, and that's probably because the depth of this corridor, from the commercial standpoint, is narrow compared to some of the bigger highway commercial corridors, like East University, where you've got more property depth for the commercial zoning. So it puts it closer to residential. You can even see on this site plan, there's a duplex right here that would just be down the slope from the sites, and you might have seen that in the photos as well. So this is very close, and one of the things we see with vehicle display lots is they're active all night long, even if they're not open for business and transactions. People will frequent them, looking at cars at all hours of the night. So there is activity that would be an impact on the surrounding neighbors. So from that standpoint, staff has concern about allowing this to become a vehicle display lot. And that was pointed out when this went through rezoning in the past, and at that time, that's why the restriction was put on. I'm going to show you the consent map, and then I'll give you the staff recommendation. So we have a couple, and I'll pass those around. In opposition, and then two that are in favor. At this time, staff does not believe that the display use can be found in conformance with the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan. The designation does give the sense that it is auto-oriented, small-scale strip commercial, however, given the other types of uses, and the desire to preserve and protect adjoining residential, as the plan also calls for, we find that it doesn't meet that provision of the plan, and so we find that it's not in conformance, and recommend that the commission find it not in conformance. And by that, then we would recommend denial of this change, to remove that condition, allowing vehicle display. Any questions?
Any questions? Eric, I did have one question. We've had, I know that in the past, we had some other things with respect to awnings. This has one of those awnings, so we have a problem with that in this particular matter?
My understanding is that as a structure, it can remain.
Okay.
It's legal nonconforming. If we went to expand it, or do something of that nature, then it would need some kind of word of adjustment relief.
For the...
Setbacks, and, yeah. They're generally allowed for financial institutions and gas sales, basically, other than that.
Mike?
Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, though, hasn't, in the past, the commission, if the zoning were approved, and if the site plan came in for a vehicle display lot, we have, or this commission has requested that those be removed at the time that site plan is considered, so that's something to...
Yeah, one observation on this one is it's definitely a part of the character of the original building. So were it to be removed, it probably would involve some other modification to the primary
Any other questions? Will?
This building might be eligible for the National Register. It looks, you might laugh, but it was built, I suppose, 1965, or something like that. Take 50 years, from 2000 where we are, and there you are.
Any other questions?
Yeah, one thing I could point out is, there are other uses that could go right back into this, and the building code would still recognize this as a repair function in terms of the building. So an auto repair could go in here, under the current zoning, even with the conditions that are in place, so there's things that it's suited for, that it could allow.
Go ahead.
You might understand that if this property was over half an acre, then they could do an auto display lot?
They could do an auto display lot even under half an acre, but the commission would need to waive that as part of the site plan design guidelines, when the site plan came forward.
So the half acre, under or over, has no relevance?
I understand it's a guideline.
Not a rule?
Not a hard, fast rule, it's a guideline.
There's certain things in the site plan ordinance that you would have to find in order to waive that design guidelines.
And did I also understand that, in looking at your red and green on the consent map, that one of the reds to the north is the other auto sales lot?
Yes. Yes.
Surprise, surprise.
I also concur with Will, that I find this a really interesting building, and I don't know if this is the only use that would ever work, or if it'd sit here vacant for another however many. How long has it been vacant?
Maybe it's under a year at this point, but...
I mean, for myself, I would welcome the opportunity to renovate this building, and, you know, for the neighborhood itself, I mean, looking at it now, and if there's a way to create a small car lot that, you know, that can be designed nicely, and save that structure, and do a little work on the building.
I'll wait on that.
I'm sorry?
That's okay.
Oh. It's all right.
Anything else? Eric?
No, I don't have anything further.
Thank you. If we could, please have the applicant come forward, give us your name and address.
Good evening, everybody. My name's James Sarkone, I live at 803 33rd Street, here in Des Moines, and soon moving to 1415 Park Avenue, which is right on the border of the Neighborhood Association, to where this car lot would hopefully be located. And I had the privilege of speaking to the Watcher South Board, and members and neighbors and that, two nights ago. And with, to my surprise a little bit, I didn't know how difficult this would be, trying to become a small auto dealer here in Des Moines, and especially in what I consider my neighborhood, where I grew up, and where I would like to stick around to, I guess, to do business, you know, with the people that I know. And the neighborhood was actually very supportive, very, very supportive of it. They looked at what else is going on up and down Southwest 9th, the vacant buildings, the broken glass, the, you know, the things that look and appear to be in disrepair, and that have, you know, that affected the look of the Southwest 9th corridor. And similarly, in spots along Army Post Road, which are in this Neighborhood Association, Fleury Drive, and Southeast 14th Street. And the general feeling in that meeting was, if you can take a vacant building and make it something a lot nicer, and something that won't go and, you know, become in disrepair, good for you, go ahead and do it. So I was pretty happy about that. What we are looking at, I guess, and I have some other copies of these, if you'd like me to hand them out to you.
You can just put them on the...
Okay, yeah, we can just put them on there. But this, as Eric had just showed you, is what used to be Brother's Gutters. It has sat vacant, I thought it was over a year, but at least approximately a year's time, pretty close to a year's time. And you can see how it looks, you can see the middle picture up there, where you have the taped broken glass that started, and you can see how the shades look bad. Basically, it's an ugly building sitting there. It is something that has a lot of potential, I believe that as well, but it's something that is really unattractive and sitting there right now. You can look right across the street, and see a building selling for $39,000 right now. A few years ago, it sold for, I believe it was valued anyway, or assessed at about $140,000, and it's on, it's up for sale right now, $40,000 right across the street. It's not a unique building in any way, it could serve many, many different types of purposes. There are other buildings similar to that, up and down Southwest 9th Street. And when you go back and look at this particular building right here, and its function, this particular building functions well as a car lot. You can see the garages, you can see a small office, and even the awning itself is similar to what you would find in a service station, a car lot, or an auto-related type of industry. And these other buildings do not. You know, there's no danger of, okay, we let this one car lot in, we're going to become the Merle Hay Auto Mile on this section of town now. There really isn't a lot of other buildings around in the neighborhood that really, that really could be used as an attractive-looking car lot, without a lot of renovation. I'm one guy doing this, you know, I don't have the budget of J.D. Byrider and CarMax and those to go invest a million dollars on Southeast 14th Street and be in business. But I would like the opportunity to run my small business, run a nice, clean, small business in the neighborhood where I live, and to take a building that, you know, while you, gentlemen have mentioned, there's a lot of promise to this building. A lot of people have driven by and seen that for-sale sign for about a year's time, and to date, there are no offers on it. So other people have not felt the same about that, and people that were willing to come in and invest and do those things have not felt the same about this building. For some reason, this building is not selling. And I would like the opportunity to buy it, I'd like the opportunity to turn it into a small car lot, I'd like the opportunity to keep it, you know, keep it clean. They had mentioned, Eric had mentioned before, while going through this process, that one of the things that we should consider here is, let's see if maybe that's a little better. Yeah, on the, you can see on the south side, there's currently an entrance, where it says landscaping over there, there's an arrow pointing down towards the bottom. Oh, no, and even further below that, you see the existing entrance here off of Southwest 9th. It was recommended by Eric that we at least take a look at that, to try and close up that entrance, make a nice curb space, and make it a little bit more attractive in there. He thought that might be something that would be looked nicely upon, and actually make the property look a lot better. That's why in that primitive sketch before, you saw the new traffic pattern, with the black arrows running through it. But anyway, we, you know, this is something that I'm proud of, it's something I'm going to do somewhere, and I must tell you, I have looked long and hard for an appropriate property, both in function, location, and even in style, and I have not found anything in the, you know, in affordability as well, and I have not found anything in this, on the south side of town that I think I could own and operate, and be successful at. I do find that opportunity here. And I would appreciate, you know, this is one step in trying to get it done, and I'd appreciate this commission's help in trying to move forward. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wait. Joanne? James, before you leave, Joanne has a question.
Jim?
Yes?
Wondering what you plan on doing behind the building?
Behind the building, there's an existing fence right now, and I know it was addressed here about, you know, one of the reasons why maybe this particular property was not allowed for a car lot because of activity in the evening, maybe people driving through, looking at cars, and doing things. There is a privacy fence there. If the neighbor to the west there wanted that extended, or something in order to block that, something to kind of mitigate any kind of noise of somebody driving around in there at, that may be driving through at night, I'd be happy to...
You don't plan on using the back of the area for anything, at all?
No, actually, in this, you can see, with the plan there, the backside of the building being right here, that that would just be, it's basically dead space. I mean, it would remain that way. What I'd actually like to do is, right now, there's a trash dumpster that's located right here, and it takes up some of the parking lot space. I would like to move that back behind the privacy fence. Other than that, I had no real plans for the backside of the building, except for landscaping and, you know, the current green space.
Any other questions?
Would you be planning any revisions to the building on the exterior?
The only thing I've considered is reducing the size of the awning. And the reason I considered that is because it was just kind of maybe some comments, not necessarily, I guess, from Eric, but from other city staff, maybe not finding that it is attractive. Other than that, other than that, the things I plan for the building are just, you know, to generally spruce it up. I mean, it looks dead, it needs, the glass needs to be fixed, some other functional things need to probably be taken care of before design. But any design work would be done by an architect for it. If it does have a chance for, you know, being a historic building, I'd be interested in pursuing that, so...
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward. Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application, likewise, please come forward. Please come forward, give us your name and address, sir.
My name is Ed Corey, and I own the property that's just to the north of him, with the car lot there. I'm opposed of it. When I bought the property back in 1990, city had told me that there'd be no more car lots till you get south towards Army Post Road, that they were going to, they didn't want to look like Southeast 14th Street. I believe it takes the half acre for DOT to imply a dealer's license there, this falls short. I think the building has, can be used for a lot of other different things, other than another car lot. We're going to, if we lift the provision here, we might as well lift the provision on the thrift store down there, that'll become a car lot. Toro Tire will become a car lot. We're going to have nothing but car lots all the way down 9th Street. We just had another car lot open up on Army Post Road, at Joe Madonia's corner there, by the pawn shop. I don't know how many car lots this city can stand. You ask any used car dealer, "How's business?", and they're going to tell you, "It's terrible." We've got thousands of dealers' licenses. There's too many car lots in the city. I'm just against it, because of the property zoning, that has already made their rule not to be zoned for a car lot.
Any other questions?
Questions?
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, Jim, you need additional time? Seeing none, Jim, you need additional time?
Maybe just one. I guess the only thing I have to say in response to the opposition to it is that if another restaurant opens down the street from you, you're pretty happy there's another restaurant, right? And, and we can't deny these things because 22 years ago, somebody said there wouldn't be any car lots south of where, where this particular lot is located now. And it just, it seems to me that, I don't know, I, I consider myself good at the things that I do, and I think I can be successful there. So in regards to just being another failing car lot, I would not be in front of you today if I thought that was the case. Thank you.
Jim?
James?
Yes?
I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
You talked about the Neighborhood Association a few days ago. They are in support?
Yes, sir. Actually, the neighbors, the neighbors spoke in favor of it.
Do you have an endorsement from them or anything?
I do not, but I'd be happy to provide that to you. I, I feel certain that I could go back and get that writing from them.
My other, I grew up in this neighborhood, and I was a Kerr McGee when I was a kid, and I hung out there, but enough memory lane. My concern is, and that's all I had for you. I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
And I guess, do I have another second? Okay, the one real thing I saw about this property too that I forgot to mention, but banks don't want to lend on old gas stations. I don't know if anybody's ever tried to finance an old gas station, but banks don't want to lend on them. There's another old gas station that's been vacant across the street from Christ the King for about five or six years now. And I've spoken to the real estate agent there, and nobody can find financing for it that wants to buy the property. This property is similar to that. So it's unique in that way too, that it, that if somebody wants to go in there and put in a restaurant, they're gonna have a really hard time financing the building. I was lucky enough to find financing for it, and hopefully can move forward.
Okay, thank you. Shirley?
I think Mr. Corey has a comment, and I'm interested in hearing your interpretation or opinion about what happened at the neighborhood meeting.
I was there Tuesday night.
Can, can you come to the mic, please?
Please come forward.
My name's Ed Corey. I have the property, 4400. I was at the neighborhood meeting Tuesday night. And I, my perspective was, nobody was in favor of it. The president of the neighborhood and Jerry Burns was not in favor. They both told me after the meeting, their recommendation is not for it. So, and I understand we get a conflict between the applicant and us. But that was what they had told me Tuesday night.
Okay, thank you. I think that's why Mr. Fitzgerald was asking for some written documentation.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. We get a motion?
I will move staff unless you have something.
Okay, Jim, you moving staff?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move staff, but I do have a comment.
So we got two moving staff. There we go.
Um.
Go ahead, Joanne.
I, I came in saying, nope, never, period. I'm a little ambivalent about this now. I was born and raised two blocks from that building, and it is mid-century modern. And it is probably, if they don't let it fall to pieces, it's, it's possible that it could be very easily on the registry. But I just don't think a car lot will work here. The, the lot just to the north, this building is set on the line, on the lot line. This one is not. It eliminates an awful lot of space. And I know that you would do a good job. I know you would. However, I'm just not thrilled with the idea of putting a car lot on that corner. It, it just, it's never worked unless you're gonna really jazz up that building. A car lot would not work there. And it would just, my opinion, it just would not work there.
Any other comments? Tim?
I just, again, my, I have concern for, for the encroachment of the road that close to the parking lot. And I believe the city was pretty scrupulous in making their decision of how they zone this before, prior to these people being interested in it. And, and I believe there's good reason for that. And that was my comment, so.
Greg, did you have something? No? Okay. Anyone else?
I.
Oh, go ahead.
I think you already heard earlier, some of my earlier thoughts. Personally, I'd like to see if, if, if this had been taken a little bit further in terms of an actual site plan design, some specifics about the building, whether or not the awning would be shortened, whether or not it'd be saved, all those sorts of things. In other words, how well it was executed would affect my opinion one way or the other. Because fundamentally, I like the idea of putting lights back on inside vacant buildings and cleaning them up so that it doesn't look like the stuff across the street. So I guess that's sort of my view on this.
Anything else? Mike?
I think our common concern is often what happens when this operator is no longer there. I, I think Mr. Sarko would do a nice job, but the zoning runs with the land, not with the ownership, so.
Any other comments? Seeing none, the recommend, the motion is to approve staff, which is denial. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Pose same sign. One, Greg. You get it? Kathy? Okay. The zoning's, the request denied. Yeah, we'll go on, move on to council. What, Eric, when is that?
I believe it'd be a set hearing by the city council on February 11th, and public hearing on February 25th would be the.
The public hearing is February 25th, right?
I take that back. The next council meeting is.
It'd be received on the 11th.
January 28th. So they could receive an file and set the hearing on the 20th.
It could be heard on the 11th of February.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item number five, request from Elizabeth Ann Grask, revocable trust, represented by J. Philip Grask, to rezone property located at 2020 Highview Drive. Property is owned by Jet Parking Holdings LLC, represented by J.D. Albright. Eric, you presenting on this one, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll hand the cards out right away. I forgot. The particular property we're looking at specifically for the rezoning is the Hatch property on Highview, east of the properties that front Fluor Drive. However, the overall intention, I believe, involves multiple properties that would be along Fluor, and this would be an outlet for that and an expansion. Right now, if you look at the property from looking south towards the property from Highview, this is the residence to the west. There's a fence, I'm not sure. I looked around to see how that fence was actually allowed in the front yard area because in C zero zoning, it's not permitted that tall in the front yard area. But I'll keep looking at, there's a possibility the regulations were changed since this occurred. So this is looking further towards the commercial corridor. We did get a concept submitted to us by the applicant as to their overall thoughts for the site. And then I, we've put a line here for one of the comments, conditions that we're proposing if this is allowed. So it would look at restoring some of the paving in this area, and I'll let the applicant get more specific on that. But, and then reconstructing this area with paving for additional long-term parking in support of the airport, which is something that's in demand. One of the things that our traffic staff have indicated is if this is gated and people from the public are entering a gated situation, we need to have a queuing area that's off of the paved width of the street so that it doesn't obstruct traffic. So that, that's a policy that would be looked at during site plan stage. However, in this case, we also want to make sure we're not putting parking vehicles into view sheds that are close to the residential district to the east. And so C zero would have actually allowed this through a site plan for extension of parking. But one of the standards that they would have had to meet was keeping paving other than the actual drive approach into the area outside the front yard setback, which in this case would be this 25 feet. So one of our conditions we're suggesting in this process is that that be maintained, even if this is, as a rezoning process versus an extension of parking process. This has been used in the past for parking, so it's not a new impact that's being introduced to the area. It's been paved, it's been used. The continued use of it, however, we want to bring up to our current standards. So we're recommending in favor of the rezoning. We believe that it can be found in conformance, or it should be found not in conformance, and that we should amend the Des Moines 2020 to include this area at this depth. And that's given that the site plan will require adequate protection for the residential areas to the east with buffer yards and landscaping in accordance with site plan policies. So staff is then recommending approval of the rezoning, subject to the use of the property being limited to the C zero district permitted uses and parking lots used for temporary placement of motor vehicles, which would allow the long-term parking use that's intended. Any off-street parking shall be set back 25 feet from the front property line along Highview Drive, and any fence, and I would qualify over three feet in height, should be set back at least 25 feet from the front property line adjoining Highview Drive.
Questions? Eric, I do have one.
Okay.
I, I was trying to figure out, would this be a parking lot under C O? Could you have a parking lot under C O?
You could do, it allows, C zero allows it as an accessory to the permitted, a principal use as an extension of parking under the site plan ordinance.
But there's no extension?
And it can only be used for customer parking. So it can only be used for customers of the, the long-term parking use, which is to the west.
Okay.
So you couldn't store other things there. It would only be allowed for, as a customer use for that, so.
Eric? So to clarify, I think, under the current zoning, they would have to come to the Planning Commission to get approval for that parking lot extension.
Yeah, that's a form of site plan review.
And we, the commission requirements prohibit that from being in that front yard setback. By asking for the zoning, they're technically asking to be able to park in the front yard. And if the zoning is approved, they would have just an administrative site plan review for their, for their parking lot. So we're okay with zoning being approved, but with the exception of that, keeping parking out of that front yard setback. And then they would just come through an administrative process for their parking lot. It would not come back to the Planning Commission.
And then my next question, Eric, is, what is it, and I didn't see that on your, on your map, what's the proximity here to the airport?
Directly across Fluor Drive.
So it's directly across the street? So, and I'm trying to remember, under the 2020 community character plan, isn't this, isn't this area part of airport support areas?
No, it's considered the auto-oriented, commercial.
And that's why I'm wondering if it's, if this is an auto-oriented, commercial-type of venture, or at least part of the airport.
I think it is, and that's why it would need, we, we're determining that this area would actually have to be amended to include that designation.
Okay, all right.
Right now, I would say it stops at this point.
Okay, that's, so the farther back piece of property is the problem, is the one that we're concerned about?
Yes, and that's.
The latter portion?
Yes, that's the subject of the, of the request.
All right, all right.
I just want to clarify, is this just for the zoning tonight? It would come back for a site plan?
No, it would not come back for a site plan.
Okay.
If the, if it were rezoned.
All right.
If it weren't rezoned, they would still have the option of coming in front of you with a site plan under the provisions that allow for extension of parking into a, a more restrictive area zoning, as long as it's accessory to the permitted use on the zoning that it, that it serves.
Okay, then I have a couple of questions about, some of the cards that came by from the area residents said there's a runoff problem, and they were recommending a speed bump at the exit because of the traffic that exits there. There was a problem with one of them. And has the runoff problem been addressed?
Well, during site plan, we require that they collect and pipe runoff into the storm sewer. This isn't enough of an area that would trigger what we call stormwater detention. Certainly, you could ask for that as a condition of zoning to implement some level of detention. I'm not sure there's an opportunity to do large volumes without, and make the project viable for them.
Well, without doing retention, couldn't you do a grading, so it ran the other way or something?
Yeah, it could certainly be designed. I mean, our, our administrative review of the site plan would look at not allowing additional runoff to be placed on.
Right.
Residential areas. Normally, it would be collected and distributed to the storm sewer system. But in terms of, when you say stormwater management, I don't know if there's a, an engineered solution that will be required for what we call detention or water quality kind of detention.
Right. Just wondered if that's gonna be reviewed by someone so that we're not damaging the neighborhood.
Yes, the site plan, even administratively, is reviewed by our engineering staff.
All right, thank you.
Under, under our, under our guidelines, we set forth that this is administrative review. If you want to bring it back, we can do that. But generally, what happens is it's an administrative review. It'll, it'll still be reviewed no matter what. Anyone else? Joanne? Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, is the applicant present?
The engineer is here for the applicant.
Okay, please come forward, give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Caleb Smith. I'm with McClure Engineering Company, 1360 Northwest 121st in Clive, Iowa. Eric's done a pretty good job kind of summarizing the intent. What I think I'd like to do real quick is go over the existing site conditions, maybe a little bit further, and try and explain the intent of what we're trying to do here so everybody can see. So as you can see, this is kind of the existing site. On the south side here, my finger's just off, but right over here is Peyton. This existing building that sits right here is vacant, but is planned to be kept into the current plan. The existing parking field that surrounds this area is also planned to be kept in place as to the extent as possible. On the north side of this parking field right here, there's an existing curb. And on the east side here, there's an existing curb that sits basically right on top of a retaining wall that is adjacent to the property over here. As you go north, there's an existing building here that the current plan is to demo and completely remove from the site. And so that would open up this area for more parking. There's also some parking in here that will be removed for poorer condition as well as for gray transition from this parking field to the north. And then as you kind of come into here, most of this parking is gonna be kept. There's some back in here that's in some pretty poor condition. We're gonna remove and put some new stuff back in. But the intent is to generally keep as much of the parking that's in place there on-site and in place. Now, you can see, it looks like a lot of cracking and stuff in there. I think what you're really seeing there from this aerial, just FYI, is lack of use. It's not being driven over and the weeds are growing up. As they kind of get into going on this project, this will look a heck of a lot better. But if you walk out there, pavement from about this portion over here is in really good shape. So I think as a reuse project that they're looking at doing here, this is a really good candidate to do it. On this east side here, where this existing curb line is, we plan on moving that parking further away to come into compliance with the site plan requirements we would have over there. And we have taken this project kind of to the next step here. And so I'll go ahead and show kind of what the landscaping plan is here. Keep in mind, right now, there's really nothing on site as far as trees. Oh, there we go. So as you can see here along the east side, next to the residence, we're planning on the buffer that would be required as part of the site plan ordinance. And we're also proposing a privacy fence along that east side. So we're trying to get, provide a buffer in place there that currently doesn't exist right now. Right now, as you remember, there's just a chain link fence that stands back there. That chain link will go down, and this fence will go up. Out here along Fluor, we're actually going Out here along Flure, we're actually going to pull back where that front of that parking is. We're going to open up that area along Flure for a little more green space, and we've got some trees and shrubs that are planted across there. The other thing onsite, since most of the site is existing pavement, at this point in time, we're talking about not cutting in actual landscaping islands, but putting in some concrete planters with some decorative grasses in there. We want to try and meet the intent of that zoning ordinance as much as possible and still use this existing site and get it to have more, a better functioning product. So we've proposed in several locations, some of these grass planters. The reason we'd like the planer idea is it's movable. If the layout plans should change, then we can move them around, put them where we need to. And also during winter time, just makes it easier to move snow if we kind of got them all put in one spot. Maybe the big question that comes up is drainage and what we're doing there. We have taken a look at that. Right now, this existing site, about at this point here, sheds towards this corner here right now. So if you look at this area, right now, that all heads there. And at this point in time, we've done everything we can, given the existing conditions we have to work with, to push as much of this this way. I'm going to put up one more drawing here just to kind of get everybody to feel for what we're doing. What you see highlighted here is actually the new pavement that we're going to be putting back in place after we do all of our removals. So in this area here, along this curb line, we're going to reestablish curb so that water will not flow into the neighboring property to the east like we've got. But then over here, we have pushed as much as we can here at this point in time. And the current plan is to try and get this project in place, get it up and going. And as revenues come in to do an overlay over this parking lot down the road, and with that overlay, we can do even more to push water towards Flure. But with the existing pavement and the grades that they are right now, there's only so much we can do to redirect flows and still make this a viable project. One of the questions that was brought up is the idea of storm sewer. And, you know, it's, storm sewer would be a possibility to come from here, all the way out here to collect all this water, but it means lots of things. It means more pavement removal, it means more storm sewer costs, and I can tell you right now, the way the finances are on this project, it's, it could be the kind of deal that would kill the project. Because the other thing that's also causing problems is up here on this north end, is honoring that setback. We proceeded with this rezoning because at a pre-application conference, we were under the impression that if we proceeded with the rezoning, we could get the C two standards for the parking setback. Currently, right now, that existing parking lot's almost on the property line. We're proposing on pulling that back 10 feet so that we can meet the intent of the C two zoning and provide a little better separation off the property line. So that's, that was the reason we're even pursuing the rezoning at this point in time because we believe that is. And it's only four stalls, which doesn't seem like a lot, but with the changes that we're going to do down here to accommodate traffic's concern about queuing, we're going to be down some stalls in this, and it's just another thing that's making the finances in this project more difficult. Given all this, given the, the plan that's in place right now, I think the plan that's in place is a dramatic upgrade from the existing site. If you take a look again and remember the landscaping plan that's here and what's going to be put in place compared to how this site looks now, it's going to be a dramatic upgrade on this site. The hardest part on all this is, you know, the finances being as tight as they are is that we can't do everything we want to do right now. Doing the overlay will allow us to change the grades of those parkings a little bit so we can push more water to the west, but it's hard for me to understand that this area here would cause flooding in the backyard areas when you're talking about such a localized area. Having looked at the terrain and what's sitting out there, my guess is, is that there's multiple issues, and this parking field here to the south for this hotel is probably a big reason they're having some water issues in that location. Now, I agree, what we can do here to help them out is, is everything we're trying to do. And I think with the overlay, we can accomplish more. But at this point in time, to make this project financially viable, doing anything more than we've done at this point, it's going to be really problematic.
Anything else?
I think that's all I have for now, but I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
You mentioned that you're putting a fence, you're proposing a fence.
Yeah.
What, what type of fence are you proposing?
It'd be a privacy wood fence.
Wood fence?
Yeah.
Joanne?
Are you also considering that speed bump on, on High View? The neighbors have a couple of.
That's a good point, I apologize, I didn't bring this up. This access back here is only meant to be for emergency access. All access is meant to be coming down here off the south off of Peyton, so all the in and out traffic and from this, in and out of this lot will be down here. The only folks that would have access to this would be emergency, emergency personnel.
What's going to keep the other folks from coming out that way?
A gate that won't open unless you're emergency personnel.
Any other questions? Greg, you have something? Okay. Let me ask you, I'm looking at the, the overhead, and it shows a billboard sign on there. What's going to happen with that?
Yeah, we've, we have located that billboard sign. It sits right there. I had our surveyors go out, harp-shoot that location. We put that, basically where we had a parking stall, we lost a stall. And we put that and just kind of hashed that area in as an area that wouldn't allow for parking.
When does the lease expire on that sign?
I don't know. Do you guys know off the top of your head by chance?
It has expired, but it's in the process of being renewed in project.
Will you guys be the ones making the determination on renewal?
Excuse me?
Are you going to be making the determination to renew the lease? The next question I have, my favorite subject, water.
Yeah.
You know, we have kind of a requirement that you have to retain the water, the moisture that's on your property.
Correct.
Has to be retained on your property. I can't tell you how much heartburn Ankeny causes me when they have all that paving up there in Ankeny and it comes down into Four Mile Creek, which, guess who gets it?
Right.
I'm looking at this, and I don't see any way that you have any retention on the property. How do you intend to retain water so it doesn't go down onto your neighbors?
Correct. One of the, one of the rules in, in the site plan ordinance says that if you're not changing or adding 10,000 square foot of pavement, that you don't have to do it. We're actually reducing impervious area by 4,000 square feet as part of this project. So to answer your question, we're not. We're maintaining the existing drainage that was in place and changing to the extent we can to direct water away from where we can.
And so you can understand my heartburn?
Sure.
My heartburn is that you're not, you're not taking care of the neighbors.
But the site, I agree.
And I, and I understand that, and I understand that, but you're coming to us and saying, we want rezoning, right?
Right.
But we don't want to do anything to protect those people who live right below our property.
From stormwater perspective, we probably can't do the extent of what you would, what you would like us to do with this project. The way I look at this is that I think we've done lots of other things to make this a lot better for those citizens next door.
Okay, so tell, tell me what that is, I'm, I'm trying to find that out.
Okay, right now, there's an existing chain link fence that looks out into a vacant parking field.
Okay.
We're going to be putting up a privacy fence, we're going to be putting up rows of landscaping, we're going to push specifically down on this side down here, we're going to be pushing that parking further away from the existing property owners to the east.
But that doesn't help them with the water, does it?
It does not.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anything else?
If, if the commission does have any questions, I, I am done.
Thanks. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward. Seeing none, those who are in opposition to the application, please come forward. Ma'am? If there's anybody else, we want you to go ahead and step on up and stand on the wall there and come up in orderly fashion. Ma'am, we need your name and address.
Okay, I'm Connie Fisher. I live at 2015 Peyton Avenue. My house is three doors off of Flure. I've lived in my home for 40 years. I've had problems with water runoff from this property. My property is like a swamp for, for at least 40 feet. My lot is 185 deep. It's at least four, excuse me, at least 40 of it is swamp when it rains from the water runoff. I had hired at one time a landscape designer to come to my home.
Ma'am, before you go any further, can you see your property on this, on this picture that's right before us right now? Could you point that out to us?
No, I, you know, I really, I don't, I, well, there's High View, here's Peyton.
Eric, do we have a?
Yeah, I can.
It looks like I might be, I don't know.
I think you're.
I think I'm right here.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a privacy fence along my backyard, and I'll go back to, I had hired a landscape designer to come out because I wanted to put in a perennial garden. She designed the yard for me. I have brook paths in it. I hired somebody to come and put a pergola. I have nine wisteria. I hired Landsberry Landscaping to come out and take up all the sod and put in the brook path and everything. From the water runoff, I then had to hire somebody to come in and take it all out. I could not keep mulch in the yard, it all ran up. When it, when that water runoff comes through, I mean, you, you just can't imagine the force that it comes through. Dean Curtis owns some property adjacent to mine. He has white rock down. All that rock comes just gushing through my fence. I have a real problem with water runoff. On Peyton, there are five houses that are affected by this run, water runoff. And keep in mind, it's the backyard, not the front yard. So what he says with the hotel, that has no effect of the backyard. The hotel does not affect High View. And there's at least five properties that are affected from the water runoff on High View. I mean, I would love to see them be able to do it, but the water runoff has to be taken care of. It's, it's terrible. My other question when I went to their meeting was, well, what about, since this is just cars parked here, what about horn honking with the alarm systems going off? Well, nobody had thought about that. And they're not going to have any keys for these vehicles. Are we going to have to live with wa, uh, horn honking with alarm systems going off? These are two concerns, but my largest concern is this water runoff. I, you know, my, I maintain my home, I spent all this money for landscaping, and I had to take it all out because of the water runoff.
Anything else? Well?
The hotel is directly south of your property on, on Flure and Peyton. I remember when, a couple of years ago, when there was, before this commission, a request about the parking lot, and I believe you came and spoke at that time, too. This isn't germane to the issue really today.
No.
But I'd like to ask you the question if the results of that parking lot in terms of drainage.
Yes, done nothing and intends to do nothing. Larry Scott with the Holiday Inn. But my issue there was not water runoff. He was wanting to do some re-landscaping, and my, my issue then was the gasoline show with the parking. They were blocking our driveways. Christine Hensley came out and said, no, no, a pumper can't even get through the street. Larry Scott has come before lots of times to try and do things and say he's going to do it and never does, and he has no intentions of. But the water runoff from the Holiday Inn does not affect my backyard.
Any other questions? Ma'am, you said there was a meeting, was there a neighborhood meeting, or was there?
Yeah, they had a, a small, there was just a few of us there at Quiznos that we met.
Was the entire neighborhood notified at that particular meeting?
I don't, I really can't say. I don't know. I, I was, Dean I know was, and.
The neighborhood.
Okay.
I'm not sure how many was invited.
Thank you. Sir, if you'd please come forward, give your name and address.
Yes, my name is Dean Curtis, 2014 High View Drive, and my back lot adjoins the, part of their parking lot. I would like to say one thing right now, that the neighbors that I have checked with has all approved this parking, airport parking, but they have. I haven't seen anybody that's been negative about it. I also am concerned about the water runoff because it does in that southeast corner, and the, the, the east part of the parking lot slopes down towards, towards our, towards our lots. And it just, Connie's right, when it rains, it's like Des Moines River going down through there, it takes all the gravel out and everything. That's my only concern. Everything else they've done, I've had down about the privacy fence. It was mentioned, maybe they'd like to keep the chain link fence in there and then leave the, and go with the privacy fence. I, I surely disapprove of that. I've had a lawn care for 45 years. I'm the one who has maintained that fence so trees don't grow up and everything else because the rent-a-car did nothing to it. And if I wouldn't have put stuff on it, trees, it was a mess. So I, I suggest the chain link fence would come out, and I don't think there's any big problem with that. The fence was one of my concerns. The privacy fence is fine, and I think mainly, my only concern is the water runoff. That would be my only concern, the water coming down through there, if we could get that out of the way, get it away from my property somehow. It isn't, it isn't something that's just happened. It's been there for years and, but I've put up with it for this long, and I felt if this was a time we was rezoning this, that maybe it's a time that we can push the water to the west or whatever we have to do to solve that problem would be a great thing. But other than, than that, the people that I have checked with on, on High View Drive is, is 100% for the change. The way they talk, they're going to do some landscaping, it's going to be a lot better off than what it is right now. There is a lot of cracks in the concrete. They've promised to take care of those, either clean them out and fill them up and make it look decent. And I, I, I'm happy with what they're doing, but it's just, like I say, the water runoff is the kind of main, the main source.
Wait just a second. Any questions? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You're in favor of this, but are you still going to run water over your property?
Not if they run water across my property.
So what you're saying is, the current proposal as it sits, you're not in favor?
No, I would like to see the water run, run some other direction rather than come across my property.
So if you had a vote, you would vote against it until they took care of the water?
Yeah, until, until they take care of the water.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You bet, thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none? You need some additional time? Rebuttal?
I don't think so, but thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
I have a procedural question.
All right.
I, I wouldn't mind moving staff, subject to the provision of stormwater detention. Is that acceptable?
It would be so.
Yeah, the, the commission can recommend whatever conditions they think are appropriate on the zoning regardless of what the staff recommendation is.
Subject to providing stormwater detention in that corner and providing a, a wood privacy fence in lieu of a chain link fence.
Okay. Any discussion? Greg?
Mike, I think they could still do, I completely understand what you're after, and I agree 100%, but they could still do detention and still have some of the water spilled to the east. So maybe you should clarify what your intent is.
I'd like to give staff wiggle room.
Okay.
What we're desiring is to prevent or at least greatly reduce the amount of water that's running onto the neighbor's property. They're already affecting that paved area, so it's a matter of running a pipe back to Flure somewhere else. I, I think, I think staff understands the intent.
Great. Mike, don't we have some requirements with respect to detaining water on, do you recall? I think we had some requirements about detention of water onto property. Mike, do you?
I think Eric touched on this a little bit in his presentation, but some of the triggers for that from a site planning standpoint are the amount of impervious area being added. In this instance, if they're really reducing that, there, there's a little bit of limitation. I think the zoning is the appropriate mechanism to try and, and ask for, request that type of an improvement.
But I'm, I'm trying to remember, what, what's our process? It's like five hours or 10 hours or some, I, I can't remember what it is. Forgive me.
The requirement is you're, you're retaining the difference between 100-year storm
Right, that's what it is.
And a developed storm and a five-year undeveloped.
And a developed storm and a five-year undeveloped storm. And you're releasing at the
Five-year undeveloped rate.
Undeveloped rate. So even if it goes off to the north, it's going to be far less than what you have current.
Eric, could you clarify, and maybe Caleb, you could clarify this, too. Is there an existing, any kind of curb along that, what, east lot line along that parking?
Again, Caleb Smith, Clear Engineering Company. The only existing curb line in place is right here and along the north side of this parking lot. Everything else here, there's no curb. So currently, everything sheet flows from west to east. I don't know if this helps our cause or not. Was talking to the applicants about the storm sewer issue. Given the use that they're trying to do, detention on site is problematic. Existing flows do go from that way. What could be an offer is, we've got two kinds of problems. We've got the stormwater issue, and we've got the loss of the four stalls here on the north side. If the property owners around are agreeable, if we could keep those four stalls, they're thinking they might be able to run storm sewer here and tie into the existing storm along Fluor. That would take, you know, essentially everything but 10-foot of the property out to Fluor and would completely remove head and flows to the east and would give them the four stalls here on the north side that just kind of helps keep the revenues up where they want. It's maybe a compromise. I don't know if
Caleb, I'm trying to figure this out. You said detention is a problem on this property?
Just because of configuration and parking yield they need.
And I understand that.
Yes, sir.
But if you detain, if you detained water on this property, you're not going to have any impact because it's a parking lot, right?
Right. Correct.
I mean, if it sits there and it evaporates, we're okay with that, right?
I think that's the nuance. Do you truly detain water or do you just capture it and get it out? I think your goal is to detain. I think the neighbors just want to get it out.
I agree with that. I'm just, I'm just saying, since it's a parking lot
Sure.
And you detain it on the parking lot.
And I'm not saying we wouldn't try and do and accomplish that on the parking field in that area. Because what we have, what we could do is curb all that area and we could help provide detention in that location.
Greg, I'm sorry.
I think his proposal is completely reasonable to trade off, as long as the neighbors don't have a problem. The way I look at it, it's already paved clear out to the street almost anyway. What staff was wanting was to reduce it back to a front setback, but in effect, it's not changing anything. But if we solve the water issue, detention or not
Right.
If we can shove it out to Fluor Drive, then we've helped the problem. So
And I think the way the wording is on here, it gives that flexibility. It may be a combination of both, some onsite detention, some piping. But I think the curbing, to me, is kind of that first step along that to reduce the flow that's going to the east right now. And so that, to me, is at least one thing we would want to look at.
Okay. All right. I'm good with that. I'm good with that.
So we would curb that whole east?
Well, however they do it, staff's going to make sure that they don't allow the water to drain.
I think they said they're willing to put curbing along there in exchange for latitude on the setback. So right now, Mr. Simonsen, your motion was to move staff subject to stormwater detention being provided on site. And I added, to prevent or greatly reduce runoff on those adjoining properties, you might want to modify that to address the setback issue if they're willing to put curb in.
Subject to the neighbors agreeing to reduce it, that's what the gentleman offered, and also the inclusion of a wood privacy fence in lieu of chain link.
And did he mention the piping down to the stormwater? Was that included, Mike?
Yes.
Was it?
I don't think it was included, but it is now.
The design is, you left it open to be however we can accomplish it, was the way you worded it.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm sorry. I'm not used
I really lost control, but that's okay.
Putting a curb along that east side, I would say right now, it's not going to do good. Down where the water comes through, I have the railroad ties up over eight and a half, about 99 inches high. When that water comes through there, it comes completely over top of my railroad ties and right on down. There was something mentioned about the coming back 25 feet off of High View Drive so cars can't park there. I can tell you right now, the neighborhood would not care if they put them right up next to the fence. Because what we had with the rental cars there, I mean, this is a plus, and they had cars parked everywhere. So 25-foot would make no difference.
Mike, did you want to address?
City staff knows what the issue is. And the applicant's going to remove some paving. So there's going to be sufficient dimension to work out how the water is directed. I have confidence to work it out.
Okay. All right.
Do you want to remove the staff recommendation on the setback requirement of the 25-foot?
Any other discussion? Questions? Comments?
I'd just like to, Mrs. Fisher, if she agrees with that. Connie?
Well, I guess I'm not really sure. I mean, like Dean said, a curb's not the answer. I mean, when it comes through on my property, it's like a river. There has to be, and I don't know if it's your city engineer or whoever, whoever it is, but it has to be taken care of or no.
Mike, you want to address that or Eric, one of the two?
I think, I think the key is, it's probably going to take multiple items that we were discussing to try and address the sheet flow that's occurring. It may involve a curb, likely will involve some sort of piping of stormwater and likely some surface lot detention would be my guess. We do allow surface lot on paved surfaces that are curbed to store stormwater in short-term events. So I think it'll be a combination of all those. And as long as the applicant's willing to work with us on it, I think we should be able to address that through the site plan review administratively.
Okay.
And we can work with the neighbors to let you know.
Well, I'm only willing if I have no water runoff, not the river coming through.
That's what we're going to try and do.
Yeah, no water might be tough because
Well, I don't think you say no water, but
Well, I mean, it's like a river. It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
But these are the biggest events that they're having problems with.
Okay.
And not as a condition of zoning, but I think as part of this, Caleb, would you or the applicant be willing to commit to prior to any construction, et cetera? If this zoning is approved by the council and you come through that, would you be agreeable to meeting with the neighbors again to
Yeah, I think
Go over what you're proposing to do to address the stormwater?
Yeah, I think that's a fair request.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of Mike's motion? Everybody understand the motion? Any questions? All those in favor of Mike's motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Same sign? Acclamation, Ken.
Thank you very much.
The next one is requests from Hatch Development Group, represented by Jack Hatch, to rezone property located at 501, 509, 513 Forest Avenue. The subject property is owned by Neighborhood Development Corporation. Eric, you presenting on this one, sir?
Yes, Mr. Simonsen.
Thank you. If you're leaving, we'd just ask you to move along so we can kind of, otherwise Eric's going to be sitting here trying to talk over everybody.
Yeah, you need to get some inter The subject property, I'm going to have to zoom in is along Sixth Avenue in the Riverbend neighborhood area, northeast corner of Sixth Avenue and Forest.
Hey, Eric?
Yes?
We've got some people here getting some cold air up their back. Is there some way we can, is there some way we can fix that?
I was sick after the last meeting.
I know, I know.
We've brought it up with building staff. I don't know, I'm not familiar with how the system works to be able to, short of laying down and blocking the air from coming in there. I'm not sure I can do much about it.
You're right, it does.
It turns on a neighbor.
Did you guys feel it over there? Yes.
Well, I'm wearing a wool suit. What can I say?
And we have brought this up to our building staff.
I'm sure council's brought it up to building staff, too. All right. I'm sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt you, Eric.
So I apologize for that, but I'm not sure what
Well, I just wondered, I just wondered, is there something we could do to fix it? Apparently, there's not. Okay. Thank you.
I'm not aware of any. This location, the applicant is looking to go to an MPC. If you read on the agenda, the number of units, I believe they've actually now are proposing a reduced number of units from what the original application was. The application indicated 41, and you're down to 30. 30 units now. And they've been working feverishly to come up with a scenario that works. I believe they're looking for some CDBG funding. And through that process, they're trying to get the project into a configuration that fits that program as well. The latest scenario that they're looking at would involve three buildings. And I'll let them describe these in their, when they, oh, you've got a nice colored one. Thank you. See if we can get it focused.
Now we get the camera to focus, huh?
Believe it or not, it's the thickness of the paper.
Is it really?
Yeah. This is a concept now, this wouldn't approve anything tonight or be recommending specific approval, but this is just to give you a sense of the project they're pursuing. MPC requires and multifamily use both require that the site plan come back in front of the Planning, Plan and Zoning Commission for approval. So any of the design specifics that would be of concern would come back to you for approval before it could actually be developed. Just a couple of highlights here. This would be some mixed use, I think. Are you still looking at mixed use? With live-work type units along the street frontage of Sixth Avenue. They're trying to follow in line with the planning process that's going on right now for Sixth Avenue. That also involves more of a pedestrian streetscape on the east side of Sixth Avenue. So they would be incorporating those elements into their plan as part of this process. One of the things I should note is that MPC design guidelines have a density level that they would be going a little bit over, and they would need to have waiver of that provision with any site plan in order to get the number of units they're proposing. Right now, I believe it's 2,000 per square feet per unit, and they would be a little bit under that, like 1,100 or?
1,100.
Yeah, 1,100 per unit. So something like that. And other zoning categories would require a trip to the Board of Adjustment to get that approval, but they can have that done at the site planning stage based on their design and all the factors taken into consideration. At this time, the land use on the east part of the site is designated as low-density residential. That would need to be amended to allow for this rezoning. So that's an item on Part B here for you tonight to amend that. Staff would recommend that it be not found in conformance with that currently to allow this zoning on that eastern portion of the site. But then we would recommend allowing approval of an amendment. And again, in looking at that, we determined that treatment of the site plan could address the criteria in the long-range plan.
Eric, is that because of the density? We're increasing the density?
No. Well, it is, yes. But basically, anything over a single family is
Right.
Any zoning that would allow over a single family is going to need that amendment. So the time right now, I think the density is appropriate on this corridor. We've looked at that. If you look up and down, it's a very mixed-use corridor density-wise, mixed densities. So that's appropriate from our review standpoint. We do believe, though, there's a number of uses that you would find in MPC that may not be conducive to the proximity with the residential neighborhood. So if you look at Part C in the staff recommendation and you look at Item 1 under that, there's a list of A through H, which we would recommend be prohibited as part of this rezoning. They include taverns and nightclubs, billiard parlors, game rooms, communication towers, excluding the stealth extensions of antenna equipment above an existing building 20 feet or less, delayed deposit services, pawn brokerages, gas stations, convenience stores, off-premises advertising signs, and liquor stores. So those uses, we would recommend be prohibited as part of any rezoning. And then the density would be dependent upon the site plan, as I'd already mentioned. And so I want you to be understanding of that, that that is, that would be deferred to the site planning process.
This site plan comes back to us, doesn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
And then also, any landscaping would be done in accordance with C2 District. That would involve buffer yard, perimeter lot landscaping for the parking areas and site. And then any trash enclosure shall conform in that. I think that's really a given, but this just reinforces it.
Okay.
I think through the site planning process, we can enforce that.
Not to rush you, Eric, but do we have a consent map?
We do. The adjoining owner to the north is in opposition. Did I pass around the card?
Yes.
Yes, you did.
So we have some owners directly to the north and across the street
Is that?
That are in opposition.
Trigger?
No, that isn't within the threshold for
Okay.
Six, seven vote of the councils.
All right. Any questions? Thank you. We can get the applicant to please come forward while we're not rushing you guys. Polar Express is coming, so.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Clark Snyder, Simonsen and Associates Architects, 1717 Ingersoll Avenue. Also with me tonight, the applicant, Representative Carol Bauer with Hatch Development Group, Mike Kildebrand with the Riverbend Neighborhood Association. Hatch Development is pursuing this property with the CDB submission, CDBG submission on February 4th. In our request for rezoning, this property to MPC is obviously the first step from redevelopment Just a brief snapshot of what's going on with the site itself. Obviously, we need to submit this with our CDBG packet. So we are a little further along with the site plan, buildings, elevations, floor plans, all that good stuff. But we are proposing a paired building up front with some green space and some plaza space. We're working through that right now, doing benches and impervious pavers between those two buildings. There are going to be two, or excuse me, four live-work lofts abutting Sixth Avenue, and then four live-lofts on the back. Two-story building here, too. I've got some schematic elevations as well. And then again, this is a 21 to 22-unit apartment, three-story apartment project proposed on the back, similar to what Hatch has proposed in the past on High Street and 17th, if you're familiar with that project. And I will share these elevations with you.
That's what I'm going to ask.
And conceptual design.
And I assume the red is brick?
And we'll note that this, the apartment project was designed by ASK Studio.
Anything else?
The site will also incorporate green building practices such as rain gardens, green space with over-story trees, pedestrian-friendly walkways, and coordinate these practices into the proposed Sixth Avenue corridor redevelopment.
Are these buildings going to be LEED certified?
They are, they're not going to be LEED certified, but they are going to meet Green Streets requirements, which is a part of the development packet for CDBG. We are going to do, we are, I guess we are pursuing LEED certification.
Great.
Just LEED certified, correct? Not silver, gold, or platinum, but LEED certified.
Oh, she wants the platinum. She changed her mind while she's, I'm kidding.
We'll probably shoot for the points on silver and hope to get certified. So we have some additional there because you never know going through the application process. So Riverbend Neighborhood Association and Mike will highlight this further, as well as the Sixth Avenue Corridor Group strongly support this project, and we are in agreement with the staff report recommendations and respectfully request your and respectfully request your approval of the requested rezoning on NPC.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, any questions? Thank you. Yes. Oh. Go ahead, Joanne.
You are going to have, you are going to have commercial in with this residential?
There are going to be live-work lofts. So there will be some for startup businesses within this neighborhood. So there will be a living space. I do have...
A living space and a commercial space together?
Correct. Yeah, that'd be East Village Square, which is a Hatch Development project.
Oh, okay.
Which, it's going to have about 250 to 300 square feet of available retail space, you know, for an artist or might be an accountant, a consultant-type business.
And retail like along Sixth and along Forest or wherever it is at.
Correct. More specialty-type shops, startup businesses.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? I'm anticipating, favor of the application, please come forward, give us your name and address. I'm going to open the public hearing.
My name is Carol Bauer.
Oh, Carol.
With Hatch Development, 1312 Locust, Des Moines. And I have asked Mike Hildebrand to just read a brief statement regarding why Hatch would like to do this.
We can do that. Mike, what you come forward for?
Mike Hildebrand, 410 Franklin Avenue. And I'm speaking for Carol Bauer and Hatch Development Group. Greening America's Capitals is a project of the partnership for sustainable communities between the EPA, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and the U.S. Department of Transportation, the DOT, to help state capitals develop a vision to implement distinctive, environmentally-friendly neighborhoods that incorporate innovative green building and green infrastructure strategies. The program assists three to five communities per year under heavy competition nationwide. Des Moines, Iowa, and more specifically, the Sixth Avenue Corridor was selected in 2013 as one of five cities. EPA has selected a team of designers to visit Des Moines to reproduce schematic designs and exciting illustrations intended to capitalize or complement a larger planning process for the Pilot Neighborhood, the Sixth Avenue Corridor in Des Moines. Additionally, the pilot program on Sixth Avenue could be the testing ground for citywide actions such as changes to codes and ordinances to better support sustainable growth and green building. Des Moines will receive assistance to incorporate green infrastructure elements into a streetscape plan for a one-mile segment of Sixth Avenue. The Sixth Avenue Corridor, which serves as the northern gateway to the city's downtown, is a Main Street Iowa urban neighborhood district with the direct access to the Des Moines River. The Greening America's Capitals project will create design options to revitalize this commercial street, such as wider sidewalks, narrowing traffic lanes, better street lighting, and improved bus stop shelters, as well as street trees, permeable pavement, rain gardens to minimize stormwater runoff. Excuse me. The city plans to use Sixth Avenue Corridor to guide designs for plant, other planned streetscapes improvements throughout the city. In early redevelopment stages to revitalize Sixth Avenue Corridor, Hatch Development Group has received input from the city, Sixth Avenue Corridor Group, Neighborhood Association, and the EPA regarding the green building standards that are expected to enhance the corridor. Simply redeveloping the streetscape is not enough. Sustainable green building will be required to enhance the corridor and hopefully provide a best practice for other neighborhoods. Hatch Development Group LLC now has an option on two of the final vacant properties currently available for new construction on Sixth Avenue Corridor. Sixth and Forest, 1236th Avenue, plus a right of first refusal on Sixth and Hickman, and is prepared to make a substantial investment in the city's strategic redevelopment plan. In order to meet the stricter green building standards, it is necessary to change the rezoning to NPC to reduce the number of parking spaces to allow for the required mitigation of stormwater onsite, i.e. rain gardens, detention, and green space. NPC's rezoning has been a standard for redevelopment on Sixth Avenue in previous years and will probably be required for future projects as well.
Are you done?
That's Carol's statement.
That was easy enough for you to say, right?
I'm trying to hurt, because I'm cold, too.
Well, if you want to talk, we're going to let you talk now, too.
Okay. Mike Hildebrand, 410 Franklin Avenue. And I am also the Riverbend Board President. And I'm speaking for myself and the board and the neighborhood at this point. Early last year, some members of the Riverbend Neighborhood Association reached out to Carol Bauer and Hatch Development Group to request they come to our neighborhood to see what we had to offer. One of the key reasons we approached HDG is we felt that they were a good fit for our community with their proven track record of managing their properties in a responsible manner. Another important driver is that HDG projects are iconic in Des Moines with their signature design features such as high-quality materials and construction, and how their designs would complement our historic neighborhood. Carol presented both the Sixth and Hickman and the Sixth and Forest sites preliminary proposals to the Riverbend Neighborhood Board of Directors in August. After the presentations, I fully intended to delay a vote by the board until after Carol had departed the meeting and the board had time to discuss any concerns. I was overruled by the board, and we held a vote on the spot and endorsed both the projects, was unanimously approved. These projects have also been presented to many of our residents and have been met with much excitement and no reservations. Many Riverbend residents have been working for over 20 years to bring this once-thriving neighborhood and corridor back from the state where some property owners and leaders in our community's history let it decay. While the city of Des Moines has been instrumental in working with us to accomplish the improvements you see there today, there has not been many private developers who are willing to commit their efforts and funding to the Riverbend neighborhood. HDG is ready to make the commitment. And I personally believe that Hatch Development Group will not only be the leader in redevelopment of the Riverbend and Sixth Avenue Corridor, but will also be the trigger to get others who are apprehensive to commit to our neighborhood to follow. I strongly encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to join Riverbend Board of Directors and residents and embrace this project as key turning point in Riverbend's revitalization efforts.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward. Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward. In opposition? Seeing none? You need rebuttal time for yourself? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Greg, Joanne?
I have a question first.
You have a question after the motion?
All right.
Okay, go ahead. Now you've got all the time you want.
After the motion.
Motion's moved, staff, so we're going to split this out, by the way. First question is whether or not the proposed rezoning is conformance. It is not. And then, we're going to amend it and rezon it, right? Okay. Now you can talk.
I've mentioned this before with the last time we used this NPC neighborhood district. My concern is the parking. You know, it's 40% less than it would normally be. And with 29 units, if there are two adults living in a unit and they each need a parking space, that's almost 60 parking spaces needed. And we have, what do we have, 17? Or how many parking spaces do we have? 17 on-street and 17 stall, so we've got... I have a concern that we may be doing this neighborhood a disservice by not uplying adequate parking for these units.
There are approximately 32 units onsite and on the street. There is parking on the other side of the street as well that we have not shown in our site plan. There will be adequate parking. We will have 14 two-bedroom and 16 one-bedroom units on the site. The work-live lofts, I'm sorry, the work-live lofts will typically have one person living in them, even though they are a two-bedroom unit. We did, when we redid 601 Forest, we did NPC on the other side of the street. That has worked out very well. And that was both, that's mixed use, commercial on the first floor, residential on the second floor. So having worked in that neighborhood for 10 years, I think the only way we can make progress is to do NPC zoning for some of these sites.
Do we have any photographs of this streetscape to know what sort of parking issues are there right now? Because if we add retail, I mean, we're talking just the residential spaces. And then, if you add retail parking, it could be a real problem. Do you have any pictures to show?
Well, I don't have that. But what I could offer is that on the live-work units, for example... Yeah, I mean, there's on-street parking on this, except during the peak hour when the outflow from downtown on this side of the street is the same on the other side of the street, on the inflow in the morning, for two hours. It's very similar to what we see on Forest Avenue and University Avenue west of downtown. The, you would see NPC on actually both of those corridors that we've rezoned, the area around east of Drake.
Is there any way to know how adequate the current parking is? If they're currently full, or they...
I don't know of any issues with congestion of parking. I guess that's, I could indicate that. They've gone through an extent, they've actually gone through several Sixth Avenue planning processes. This is probably the third since I've been with the city of Des Moines.
Do you know?
And the process, all of these have really determined that this is the type of neighborhood where density would be appropriate and that pedestrian scale is appropriate, which calls for less parking. And in some ways, it's a leap of faith to attract a population that doesn't rely on the automobile. So that's part of the effort of it. So your concern is legitimate. And the process over time has really taken that into consideration. So it is a conscientious decision. Are we going to try to draw a market that doesn't rely on the automobile and relies more on pedestrian activity or not?
And hope it works.
But I'm not aware of any real, I mean, at night, a lot of these neighborhoods have parking congestion just by the nature of the number of units in the neighborhood. So Sherman Hill has a similar situation, areas west of Sherman Hill.
Greg Johnson.
Vicki, what I would say is NPC may be a leap of faith. But if we are going to have anything sustainable, we need to reduce the amount of parking required and not make everybody park to death. It's less paving, it's less everything. This is on a bus route. It's in a traditional neighborhood that's had less parking required. This is the perfect place for NPC. Our ordinance allows it. And we need to be encouraging it, not discouraging it.
I have three points to make, if I could, in support of Greg's...
Greg's doing a great job.
It is a bus route. I was just going to comment on the plans for Sixth Avenue Corridor, the preliminary plans as they stand right now. You can see the bumpouts there. They're going to be reduced. The preliminary plans are two lanes of traffic, and the parking would be on the east, as well as, we are trying to make it more walkable with wider sidewalks, so you don't have the automoblish.
Greg.
I just had a massing question, or height question. I'm having a hard time reading the screen here. The two smaller buildings on Sixth, are they three-story?
Two.
Two.
These are two.
And what's the height of the larger building?
It's a three-story building.
I guess my question is just what drove the decision to not put the higher mass along Sixth Avenue as opposed to the inner street?
I thought Carol had a comment.
She'd talk when she can.
And again, it was just a desire for Hatch to have those two-story loft-type buildings at the front.
It was actually a requirement of the Neighborhood Association and the Sixth Avenue Corridor that we have some commercial along Sixth Avenue. That's why we did the work-live lofts. They will be incubator spaces for small business, and so we put those there.
I thoroughly understand that. And by the way, I'm in full support of the rezoning. But I'm trying to understand why there's a tall, four-story building on the, I'm sorry, three-story building on the Fifth Avenue. It just seems like you would want along Sixth Avenue to have your higher mass.
Yeah.
Just a comment.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I will also state that High Street, brickstones that Hatch Development has there, they have 21 units and 17 on-street, off-street parking stalls and street parking stalls as well. That seemed to work really well for us as a neighbor.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. And we already did that. We've already got, already have a motion. All right. We're going to go ahead and split this out. And we'll first look at determinations whether or not the proposed rezoning is conformance with 2020 Community Character Plan. Existing Community Character Plan. And the staff says it's not, right? Okay. Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Obviously, Mike's abstaining. Opposed, same sign. Now, we're going to take up B and C. We're going to amend it to, well, first of all, we're going to amend this Community Character... Easy enough for you to say. We're going to amend the Community Character Plan. There we go. And then, we're going to rezon it to NPC. Does everybody understand that? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. One opposition. And one abstention. It passes. Okay, let's move on to number nine before Frostbite sits in.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself.
Okay.
Number nine.
Great. Which Mike did on the other one. I realized Mike recused himself on the last one. Okay, great. The next one is requests from Jake Christensen to rezon property located at 2022 Southeast Sixth Street. The subject property is owned by ST Investments. Eric, you presenting on this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Well, you know, that's not a bad idea. Gentlemen, are you here in opposition to this particular item? Well, obviously, you wouldn't be in opposition to yourself, is that right?
Yeah, we did have one card in opposition, but I don't believe that person is here.
Okay, Eric.
I guess the only thing I would offer is I don't...
Mike, this is a one-minute speech, okay?
Let's just go to the staff recommendation.
That's a good plan.
You can observe the location. I'll zoom in on it, on the map, so you can peruse that as I give the staff recommendation.
And you're going to show us the consent map, too?
Yes, I will. And I pass the cards around. Yes, and just so you know, just in case you're wondering, the red on the map is the scrapyard to the southwest. Staff did look at this, and it, we looked at the dynamics of putting residential use into what's primarily now an industrial area. And based on that, looking at the market plan, which you've had presented, many of you have had presented to you. We are making the following recommendation. We do find it in conformance. The downtown support commercial is the future land use for this area. And we believe that the requested rezoning is in conformance with that future land use designation. And then, Part B, we are recommending approval of a limited C-3B zoning district, which does pull out a number of uses that have kind of an industrial character to them. Assembly and packaging, auction, then the payday loans, which are now called delayed deposit, actually. Lumber yards, retail and wholesale, machine shops, liquor stores, pawn shops, printing and publishing houses, plumbing and heating shops, mini warehousing, and then freestanding, I want to indicate freestanding taverns and nightclubs. This would still allow a tavern to be a mixed-use component of a residential structure, first-floor retail-type thing. And then warehousing, pure warehousing.
retail-type thing, and then warehousing, pure warehousing. Secondly, we want to ensure that the layout falls in line with the market district, and I'll just show you that quickly. This isn't the entire plan, but this shows the area that follows, and buildings are framing the street, and I'll let the applicant address that specifically.
Okay, thank you.
You want, can you read the rest of the item?
I think everybody's reading, and as long as they survive in here, we'll be fine.
I guess I did want to emphasize, we are asking that they do the adjoining street improvements and participate in the cost of that, those improvements as necessary, and that would be something that wouldn't be typical of our normal recommendation.
Thank you, Eric. Not to run over you, I'm sorry, but normally, it would be okay. Any questions, Eric? Seeing none?
I was just curious if you heard from the Neighborhood Association, any comments either way?
I don't think we've gotten communication, this is the East Village area, but we haven't gotten any opposition from them either, so.
Is the applicant here? Please come forward, give us your name and address. We ask that you make it brief. Or we're going to have you step back here where you can...
I can feel it over there.
It's getting better.
Is it getting better? Oh, good.
My name is Jake Christensen, 506 Third Street, Suite 300 Des Moines. Thank you to the chair and commission for your time. We'll make this very brief. I did actually meet with the East Village Neighborhood Association. I'm anticipating, I will have a follow-up meeting on the 28th of January. I'm anticipating a letter of support from them. The first meeting went very well. We are proposing basically to mirror the character plan that was done in the Lower East Village study. The first phase is the hashed-out area that Eric mentioned. We're talking about a very green building. We will be meeting both Green Globes as well as LEED certification for the building. Geothermal is the most likely source of heating and cooling for the building, much like the building I did at East Fourth and Grand. And so I've been watching the site for a long time. I think at this point, I'll pass it off to the professional to give you a little bit more details about the site, but we're here for questions.
Thank you, Jake. Please give us your name and address.
Dan Rendell, Slingshot Architecture, 305 East Court, Alstom, Des Moines. Yeah, I might need to. Just in the interest of time, I'll start talking before we get to the slides. But we're proposing probably a four-story building, parking on the first floor, to be an asset to the rental market, but also to provide a future space for commercial retail as the neighborhood starts to fill in. So we're actually going to start with, I'll just finish my summary of the building, and then I'll jump on this. So we're going to start with some retail options on either end of the building, and then as time goes on and the market district fills in, the option to convert those parking bays into retail will be relatively easy. We'll make sure that the ceiling height is conducive to that kind of layout. So we want to be flexible, but we also want to fit in as well as we can as far as safety and whatnot for our residents, for a residential building going into a largely industrial district, at least as it's starting out. The slides are just a quick story of how the site goes and why we believe this is a good use for here. So Court Avenue is the yellow arrow on top, and Sixth is, East Sixth is the arrow on the right. East Sixth is kind of turning into more and more of a major thoroughfare as far as connecting us north-south to ML King, right with the East Village. Oh, it's okay. Proposed sites marked out here. Very exciting that the city is actually in ownership of the land above, and that's kind of, or to the north, and that's actually slated to be kind of that market street park in the master plan. So here's the master plan image of kind of the ideal build-out of this area, but we're there, and we're excited that Phase 1, like we say, faces Sixth, but Phase 2 would be a little bit lower-density, walk-up-type housing and would face a park in the future, which is very exciting. So, yeah, there's a site in that. And here's a little zoomed in. So we'll start with parking in our building, and then we're going to phase out the site, like I said, but even in the long-term vision for the site, the center portion of the site that will never be taken up with parking is going to be programmed out as place space for children, a garden for the residents. I think we zoom in here. Yeah. Nature play, community garden, around 10,000 square feet. So that island, kind of the dashed line that you can see in there, is like the future parking median, I guess, or the land in between the parking of the complete built-out site. So we're working with Genus Landscape Architects on this, and they've come up with some really great ideas for that. I think Jake's covered just about everything else. 36 to 42 units is kind of where we're looking at. We are looking to apply for the CDBG grant. Any questions?
Any questions? Mike, did you have something?
Just to clarify, in the staff rec, we'd mentioned some, made some reference to sound mitigation in construction. We didn't specify a standard for that, but we just wanted to assure that we're able to work with you on that. Obviously, with this being in the middle of an industrial area, we did have some concern about frequency of the trucks from the public works facility, et cetera, at least in the interim period, and we wanted to make sure at least there was some sound mitigation for residential property coming into an area that's known to have noise.
Absolutely, and I actually spoke with the gentleman who had the card in opposition to the project. His concern was complaints from residents about dust coming from his, you know, permitted use onto the cars. That's not the reason why we're approaching the first phase that way, but it is an ancillary benefit that they won't be subject to that. As a part of the LEED certification, we're going to be creating a very, I guess, efficient building envelope, so we're going to have high insulation values in both the walls and ceilings, window penetrations, and so we'll be naturally getting a better sound barrier between those conditions.
Because I know there, with the federal funding sources, there are some criteria that maybe, there may be some strings with any money from a federal source that may require some mitigation, but we did not specifically tie it to a specific standard at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, because I don't see anybody here that's going to be in opposition and in favor.
Move, staff.
Okay, staff's been moved. Any discussion? Do we have to split this one out, too?
No.
No, okay, we don't have to split this down. Okay, any discussion, any questions? Counsel? We're okay? All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, Catholic. It passes, we have one abstention, or one, yeah.
901.
Election of Officers.
I believe tonight you are nominating your slate and would vote at your next meeting, your first meeting in February on the officers for the next year.
Okay.
When he was on her committee, that had the slate.
Yeah, who's on her, who has this?
I'll speak to it.
Thank you, Shirley.
Since I'm the only one. CJ is off in the air as of this morning, and Will is frozen, and so he's gone as well.
Shirley tucked it out, though.
I said I would take care of it. The nominating committee was made up of the three of us, and the procedure, kind of what we used was to poll all of the members of the commission to see about the interest regarding these positions. And CJ was kind of the person in charge of making those contacts, and she came back and said that she really didn't have anyone who had expressed an interest in it. So therefore, we went with our current slate of position holders, and that is what we're recommending for this evening, that Dan, with two N's, would be, Dan Flattery would be our chairperson, Greg Jones would be the first vice chair, and Mike Simonson would be our second vice chair. And so that, at this time, that's the recommendation coming from the nominating committee. I'll let you deal with that, and I've got one other comment.
All right.
Okay.
Any questions, comments, et cetera?
No.
We'll vote on it next, we'll vote on next.
Okay. The other thing that CJ had asked that we would mention, and Will and I have talked about this as well, we all understand about state regulations on boards and commissions regarding gender, and CJ just wanted us to make sure that we would mention to the ladies of the group that they would please consider perhaps taking on one of those positions in the future. That's something that we've talked about before, so I just wanted to, I had assured her that I would make mention of it, and I'm sure that the ladies will consider it.
And one of the reasons, frankly, why there's a first vice chair and second vice chair is because it used to be secretary, and that was, was exactly gender-neutral.
Exactly.
So...
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Committee directors report briefly.
Real quickly, the luncheon with the city managers is canceled for tomorrow. Rick has, is actually in DC for meetings, and so that meeting's not being held. Your officers, just to clarify, I did make a call to the building staff tonight, and I'm sorry about the conditions again. I'll try and work on that with them.
They will get a call.
Those vents, or, under the window is actually the heat. It doesn't really feel like it right now, but that is the heat, so I took the coats off over that. That is air circulation that helps for the whole building, so the plan is supposed to shut this off during the meetings, and I don't know why it was on tonight, so I apologize for that again. We will get that corrected. Thank you.
Greg, Arno. Anything else for the good of the group? Seeing none, we adjourn.